Good evening. This is the Planning and Zoning Commission for the municipality of Anchorage. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Dean?
Here.
Mr. Ferguson?
Here.
Mr. Robinson?
Here.
Mr. Walker?
Here.
Mr. Spohays?
Here.
Mr. Strike and Mr. Kanech are excused. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have no minutes. Mr. Walker, will you do the disclosures?
Mr. Spring, any disclosures?
I have none.
Mr. Chair?
None.
Mr. Robinson?
Are this disclosures related to our one case tonight?
2015-0049.
I think just to clarify, my employer is cooking the Housing Authority. I have been involved with meetings, including some with the Assembly Subcommittee that I believe was part of what put some of this together. I work in multifamily housing. That said, I believe this is a legislative item and I'm not considered to have a specific conflict here, but just want to disclose that.
Ms. Dean?
Just want to disclose that I am a residential general contractor. I do not build anything. I remodel and I do additions, but I am a licensed residential general contractor. I'm also a member of Anchorage Home Builders Association.
This is a legislative matter. I don't believe that that removes you.
Yep. I just wanted to disclose my background because I've been in the press stated otherwise as being a builder, so I'm not.
Mr. Spohays?
None.
Ms. Parker?
Thank you. Similar to Mr. Robinson, my organization develops affordable housing, multifamily housing in particular. My personal involvement in it is somewhat tangential and yes, this is a legislative matter, that really should have no bearing.
I have no disclosures. I also work in a peripheral industry, but I don't think it has any bearing.
Thank you. Ms. Parker, you were assigned consent agenda, but there's nothing on the consent agenda, so you lucked out.
I get a free pass.
You get a free pass on that one. The next item before us is a public hearing case, Matter 2015-0049, Community Development Department, municipality of Anchorage, and ordinance amending Title 21 sections. And we have a staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is an extensive ordinance that came about in order to respond to feedback that the planning department has received since the adoption of the new Title 21 in February of 2013 and its effectiveness at the beginning of January 2014. We did hear a lot of feedback that there were concerns that the standards of particularly the multifamily design standards were too complicated, too restrictive, and too expensive. We did hold a day-long workshop on August 22, 2014. I believe the Planning and Zoning Commission was invited and some members attended parts of that. And at that workshop, we went through the entire section of code as well as some other related sections in order to get a firm grasp on what issues were of concern. Since then, we've been working on these amendments and also checking in with them with the Assembly Title 21 Committee. The committee has, for lack of a better term, blessed this ordinance going forward, although that I don't think means that every single committee member thinks every single provision is what they prefer. And as you'll have noted at the end of the staff report, there are a couple of sections where the planning staff differs with what the Assembly Committee has told us to move forward, but I will touch on that at the end. I'm going to just give you a brief overview of the eight sections of the ordinance. It will be very brief and then we will, of course, I think Mr. Davis will be joining me in a few minutes, but we'll be happy to answer questions that are related more to the specifics. So with that, I will just note that Section 1 of the ordinance is amendments to the district specific standards of the R2M, the R3, the R4, and the R4A districts. They address maximum building length in those districts. In the R4 district, they add 10 feet of maximum height allowance so that if you use your height bonuses, you can get 70 feet of height rather than 60 feet of height. They reduce the requirement in the R4 district for the number of frontages that have to have non-parking building along that frontage when you do use the height increase provision. And in the R4 and the R4A districts, they increase the base FAR that you can have before you have to use FAR bonus provisions. Section 2 increases lot coverage in the R4 and the R4A districts. Section 3 addresses height transitions and provides more exceptions to the height transitions. And then it also makes a change to calculation of floor area ratio, exempting any floor area for stories below grade rather than just for parking below grade. And story below grade is a defined term in Chapter 14. Section 4 makes changes to the open space section. There's a lot of changes, but the most significant ones are that smaller townhouse projects are exempted from having to provide common open space, meaning common to all the residents of the development, rather than private open space, as in private to individual units. It reduces the amount of open space required in all of the districts with the biggest change coming in the R3 district. And then the other changes address problems that we found through reviews of projects over the last year and also provide some clarity where we heard that there was some confusion. Section 5 clarifies that snow storage cannot be permanently stored on required parking and it also allows private open space to be used for snow storage. Section 6 makes an amendment to one pedestrian amenity to reduce the requirement for that amenity. Section 7 is the biggest section, has the most significant changes, and is the one I'm going to kind of touch on the least in this overview because it is so complicated, but this is changes to the multifamily design standards as well as the standards for multiple residential units on a single lot. One of the biggest changes is that it combines the standards for multifamily and townhouse style development into one section so that the same standards are applying to both of those types of developments. We've tried to make changes that provide clarity, that also simplify the requirements and make them less onerous. And then the last section, Section 8, makes a couple of changes to the definitions for sometimes for clarity but also for ones to be less restrictive. The second half of your packet has a lot of testing examples where we have tested, or actually I should say Mr. Davis has tested, two developments in their entirety for all of the standards and then a lot of different developments, just he tested one element of the standards, you know, one element in one section and a different element in another section. Starting on page 23 of your staff report, the department did recommend five changes to the draft ordinance that was provided. In the explanation, we explained why Section F2C on Page 1 was no longer necessary. Proposed change number 2 and change number 5 are related. The department does not agree with the Assembly Committee's request to delete the requirement for storage to be provided for multifamily units, but we have tried to take the existing storage requirement and make it more flexible. So there's both a change in our proposed amendment number 5 on Page 25 and then also the change number 3 on Page 23 gives some, I'm sorry, change number 2 gives some floor area bonus when you provide additional storage. Change number 3 on Page 23, the department does not agree that all private open space should be allowed to be used for snow storage for the entirety of the winter, so we propose that up to half of private open space be used for snow storage as long as the area is made usable and cleaned up by May 1. Change number 4 is in response to comments that we received from the Building Safety Department regarding articulation, both wall articulation and roofline articulation and concerns particularly relating to seismic hazards. So those are five changes that the department recommends. I would also like to note that next month, you will be seeing another ordinance that was put forth by Assembly Members Hall and Domboski. This ordinance makes changes to some of the sections that are also proposed to have changes in this ordinance, but one of its more significant proposals is that it exempts, or it postpones the effective date. I don't want to say postpones because they're already effective, but it basically takes away the residential design standard section, all of Section 2107-110. So that's all residential design standards, not just multifamily but also single family and two-family, multiple structures on a lot, everything. And it says that they do not become re-effective until January 1, 2017, pending an evaluation of the consistency of the section with the comprehensive plan and the Assembly's acceptance of such evaluations. So this will be coming to you on June, second meeting in June, I believe June 8, and the Assembly has a public hearing scheduled on this ordinance on June 23. At this time, there is no Assembly public hearing scheduled on what is before you tonight because this was a staff-generated ordinance and hasn't been introduced at the Assembly level. With that, we're happy to answer questions. Thank you.
Okay. Point of clarification, the fifth recommendation of the staff occurs on Page 25 or 26 down near the bottom. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. That is correct.
Okay. Thank you very much. Questions for staff? Ms. Dean?
Through the chair, I have, I'd like to ask a few questions that I think some of us know, but I thought they would be good to have on the record. The first one is, from a historical standpoint, does the old Title 21 have any design standards related to this at all?
Through the chair, Ms. Dean, there are no residential design standards relating to buildings in the old code.
Okay. Has the, many developments yet used the new code?
Two or three multifamily developments have used the new code. More single and two-family developments have used the new code. I don't have a number for that.
Okay. And does Eagle River, are they affected by the design standards in this ordinance?
Yes, they are.
Okay. So it is Anchorage, Eagle River, Girdwood. It isn't just Anchorage.
It's not Girdwood.
Oh, it's not Girdwood.
They have.
So it's Anchorage and Eagle River.
Correct.
That are affected. And, oh, because they have different, they have GR codes, so they have a different zonings entirely. So we know that no existing buildings are going to be affected by these ordinance, correct?
Correct.
Unless they were to put in addition, add more units potentially to a building?
Correct.
Okay. So has anybody done an assessment to figure out how much time it takes for somebody pulling a permit for a building just to read this information and figure it out? Has anybody done an assessment? And the reason I ask, and this is a legitimate question, the IRS does that with their forms. If you look, it will tell you how much time is expected to read and put together the information for the form. Just curious if anybody has actually done an assessment to figure out what it takes? If you are going to either design or pull a permit for something like this, you know, what would it take to get through this form, through all this information?
We have not done such an assessment.
So has anybody done a cost analysis for the average building and what the cost, additional cost factors related to these design standards?
Through the last parts of the development of the rewrite, there were efforts to try to cost out the residential design standards and there were promises, well, there was some discussion of working with development, community members about providing cost information, but nothing ever came of that. So no, no, no cost analysis has been done.
I do know Andrew Spinelli did a little bit a while back and he was coming up with about $5,000.
Ms. Dean, if I can interrupt, that was based on the provisionally adopted code and there were many changes made that made that analysis no longer valid.
Right. And his also included landscaping too, so there was some other issues with that. I think his was also single family and that townhouses like this is. So we don't have a cost analysis for what increased cost this would be for somebody with a piece of property that they want to develop.
Correct.
Compared to the old code. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dean. Mr. Robinson, then Mr. Spring.
Thank you. Couple of questions and points. First, we have a letter in front of us laid on the table, I think it was emailed last week from the Rabbit Creek Community Council, and I just was curious, there's some assertions that there's been a lack of public involvement in this process. I wonder if you can speak to that?
Sure. In the third paragraph, she, Nancy Pease, is noting that the, well, my understanding is that she's talking about Assembly Title 21 Committee meetings. I believe the Assembly Title 21 Committee meetings are noticed on the Assembly's meeting page, but I do not believe information about those meetings are sent to community councils. But essentially, those meetings are Assembly Committee meetings and thus the Assembly follows their own process about how to notice those. It is true in the fourth paragraph that the council, oh, by the way, the ordinance was routed to all the community councils in the bowl, I'm sorry, in the entire municipality, including the Chugueke Eagle River Advisory Board. And they were given less than 30 days to review this case. It was routed towards the end of April, right around April 23. That was when we were, we were told to schedule this quickly. So there have been no public meetings, no work sessions on this ordinance.
Okay. Just out of curiosity, do you happen to know how many vacant multifamily zone lands exist in the Rabbit Creek Community Council?
No, I don't, but not very many.
If you were to guess, probably that weren't R3SL single-family lots, probably not many.
Not many.
Okay. A question also on process, I sat through some of the early meetings that happened, I think in November and December. One of the things we discussed at the time, I think to Ms. Dean's point, based on, I've been involved with two projects, multifamily buildings that have come forward under the new code and a townhouse project under the new code. One is near completion, the other is in for permits right now. And the issue on storage came up as a problem in that we're building structures at $200 per square foot. That's expensive space, very expensive space, and there was this 30-square-foot storage. Two questions. One is, I got out of the Assembly Committee meeting with kind of the notion that everyone there was unanimous in the idea that they were going to let the market sort of take care of that. Staff has sort of gone back and sort of gone against that. So I'm wondering, are these five things here in the staff packet the only things that you believe you differ with coming out of the Assembly Subcommittee? Or are there other changes within the text that might be inconsistent with whatever process they followed?
The text that was provided in the draft ordinance is the last text that the Assembly Committee saw, so we did not make any changes to the text that the Assembly Committee didn't approve with going forward. We did note where we differed with the Assembly, so, but, I'm sorry, I should say that changes number one were never discussed at the Assembly Committee because we didn't really notice that as not being a necessary subsection until we were working on the staff report. Changes in Recommendation 4 were not discussed with the Assembly Committee because those came about based on comments during the agency review of this section. You're correct that all of the Assembly members at the Title 21 Committee who spoke up did agree that they did not feel that accessory storage was necessary, but the planning staff disagrees and we felt like we should put our position forward, but the ordinance does go with what the Assembly Committee directed us to do. The same would be true in snow storage. The Assembly Committee members who spoke up said that snow storage should be allowed to be on all private open space without any, without any provisions about cleaning or removing snow by a certain date, and that's what the ordinance says. Staff does not agree with this, so that's why we put forward a recommended change. The other thing that I am aware that at least one committee member does not agree with, although it was not a, it wasn't something that the entire committee came to consensus on, was on Page 5 of the ordinance about storing snow longer than 72 hours. There was one Title 21 Committee member, Assembly member, who doesn't agree with that particular change and will likely propose to delete it on the floor. That would be my guess.
If I may follow up on this storage, which I kind of feel is like this perpetual whack-a-mole, could you tell me specifically the zoning issue or the problem that this ordinance is attempting to correct? I see lots of pictures about facades that seem rather blank and uninteresting and have relatively few windows, but I don't see sort of cluttered, you know, clutter, some sort of problem that we're trying to solve by requiring a certain percentage or certain amount of storage outside of units within a multifamily structure?
Many people who live in this community have a mode of transportation that is either a vehicle or a bicycle, and if they have a vehicle, they often have a different set of tires to use in the winter than in the summer. And when they are of a, either by choice or by economic necessity, living in multifamily housing without a garage, they are often not provided with a secure storage place for these items. And the planning department thinks that it's appropriate that these types of developments should provide storage for those types of items.
But that's your opinion? You're not saying there's an actual identified problem that exists?
Well, we have 100 acres of industrial land being used for self-storage facilities.
So you're presuming those are filled up with people that live in multifamily housing that are providing a market for something that's inefficient? I mean, that's just way out there. I guess what I would suggest is that it's a bit of overreach, but something that seemingly staff is pretty engaged on. Let me ask you one more question, if I may, Mr. Chair. I hear a lot about the purpose statements in Anchorage 2020. I'm a firm believer that all development we do ought to be to create good neighborhoods and lasting value. At the same time, there are a lot of constraints, cost constraints and otherwise. I look hard in these revisions to find things that truly would facilitate additional multifamily development in this community. I see kind of shaving of a little bit here and there, but I don't see anything that sort of deeply hits on an identified problem, nor do I really even see any discussion that in addition to making our community pretty, we ought to be trying to figure out what reasons as to why we have impediments to multifamily housing. And so I wonder if I can just get, before we go to other comments and public hearing, why we can't get staff's opinion on the role of Title 21 changes to actually encourage and facilitate that type of development?
From what I've been hearing over the last six months, year or two years, about why we're not seeing multifamily development in this community, I've heard a number of reasons. I've heard cost of land, I've heard costs of materials and labor, I've heard costs of infrastructure improvements, things like extending sewer and water, building roads, bringing existing infrastructure up to higher standards. I've heard building code provisions that are more stringent than in other areas of the country, so basically learned that, you know, our multifamily development in this community is approximately maybe 30% to 40% higher than it is in other communities. Those are serious issues, but many of them cannot be addressed in Title 21. We cannot address cost of land, we cannot address cost of labor, we cannot address cost of materials. We can't address the building code issues, so we're left with infrastructure improvements.
But you actually can address the cost of materials because you've added requirements for different types of materials. I mean, you actually can address some of that, and I guess.
Well, except that nobody's building this under the old code, whereas Ms. Dean pointed out, there are no design standards.
So thank you for, I guess, my last point, which is what Rabbit Creek was, I guess, saying, which is because we've had very limited development under the old code, it's okay if we heap some additional standards on top of something.
If I could finish, what I was, where I was going was, if we could address some of those bigger issues, and I think there have been efforts to do that, I know that your organization put forward some legislation down in Juneau about enabling tax abatement. There have been other discussions. I think the municipality put forward down in Juneau some legislation about tax abatement. There are, you know, the discussions about whether the municipality will participate in infrastructure improvements, frankly, those come from higher up than this level. Those need to come from the Assembly and the administration, and perhaps they will. But to say, because we have six reasons why it's uneconomical to develop multifamily housing, that we should throw out design standards for buildings that are going to last for 70, 100 years and not try to address this on some of these other issues, which probably would have a much more substantial impact on reducing the cost of constructing housing, that we should ignore the need to have new development fit in with existing development, that we should ignore the need to have new development be functional and attractive and work for all users because it adds some cost when really there are some larger issues that need to be addressed. That's my perspective, that we need to be hitting this from multiple fronts, but I don't, and again, we're trying to reduce the impacts of the design standards, but I do not believe that we should throw out the design standards because these buildings are going to be here for a long, long, long time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Spring?
Yes, I guess I want to piggyback on what you said about the need for design standards. I mean, I guess we got away with it for a long time and there was, when there was plenty of land and new land to be developed and we could keep moving out and keep moving out and develop more land as multifamily, but it seems obvious to everyone now that, and it's also specified in the comp plan, that the future is in redevelopment and higher density and to accommodate the future population in this city. And to do that, I think we had a good example the other month with rezoning occurring in along C Street in South Edition, where there was a substantial zoning of that property. And it spurred quite a bit of concern among the neighbors. Now, when I'm a planning commissioner and I say, well, the comp plan says you should have higher density in this area, particularly since it's near Employment Center, I want to be assured and be able to tell the people at the audience who are concerned about that rezoning that it's, don't worry about it, it's going to be done right, and the impacts of your, on your neighborhood are going to be minimized.
And this does it?
Excuse me?
And this does it?
This does what? Oh, well, their project did, I think, take and concern the properties around it, but I don't know. Will it or won't? I don't know. It could go either way depending on, you know, the developer. I think, based on the examples that I saw here, and they did, I think they did a good job of trying to evaluate various properties compared to the design. a good job of trying to evaluate various properties compared to the design standards. I mean, they went overboard, really. 31 examples, and they reviewed them, and they showed which ones met it and which ones didn't. And I think probably 90% of the time, I agreed that if it met the standards, in my opinion, the development was good. There's a few cases where the maybe it didn't quite meet the standards, and I thought, well, that's, it's not that bad. I mean, I would say I would have passed it, in my opinion, but I think, you know, a vast majority of the examples in there showed that it was a, that it works, and it will probably result in decent, compatible development. And my concern, as I said, is the development that occurs in existing neighborhoods primarily. A question that I have is, involves process also, and I'm a little concerned that I don't see anybody in the audience, or four people, sorry, not anybody, there's four important people in the audience, and to testify. I'm concerned that we may not get all various opinions regarding this, and also not only the, from the community councils, but from the development community. Am I to assume that the development community, since they work with the Assembly, is pretty much in sync with us? It doesn't sound like it, based on at least one or two developers in, on the Planning and Zoning Commission, but I'm concerned on both issues, not only the community council, but the development community. Do they have an opportunity to speak and to us?
Through the Chair, Mr. Spring, I understand and to some extent share your concern, both from members of the general public and from members of the development community, that there hasn't been very much time. The Assembly Committee has pushed us quite hard to move these quite quickly. Clearly, you know, changes need to be made before the end of the year because that's when the old code expires and the new code becomes all there is. We're, you know, it's a beautiful night out. I'm sure we'd all rather be outside. In fact, Mr. Ferguson joked earlier to me about us all going and sitting out on the grass to have this meeting. But, you know, we're also entering that time of year when many community councils don't meet. So I could not tell you with confidence that this has received a thorough vetting from either the development community or the general public community.
One more question, Mr. Chair. Is there going to be a user's guide associated with this, the design standards, residential design standards?
The Department's working on a user's guide. It will likely be a living document that we will add to over time. So, you know, as we find good examples of how to meet a certain standard, we might put that into the user's guide to say, hey, here's how, you know, so-and-so met this standard. I don't know how much the kind of first draft will address residential design standards.
Thank you, Mr. Spring. Ms. Dean and Mr. Robinson?
Mr. Chair, rather than continue to ask more questions and have more debates about these issues, I would like to, not right at the moment, but soon, I would like to move into a committee of the whole so that we can openly discuss each one of our issues related to design standards, related to these changes versus going back and forth. Do you have any thoughts, Mr. Chair?
I, not in disagreement with that, but I am reminded frequently that there has to be a motion to go into the committee of the whole, and to do that, we need to get the public hearing done before we make a motion.
Right. I just didn't want to time it incorrectly, so-
My thought would be, let's open the public hearing. We'll let the masses come up and testify, and then we will go from there.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Robinson?
Yeah, just, I guess a comment to staff and perhaps to the audience and commission as well. The way that the staff report reads, it talks about the development community. I want to sort of go into that a little bit. I mean, when, when my organization is asked to look at something or provide feedback or look at our business model, we bring our design professionals along with us. So what that has meant is we've, we've asked them or paid them to come and look at stuff and relook at it and relook at it, because all of this stuff that we're looking at is really hard to wrap your head around until you, until you actually look at the totality of it and how it affects an entire design. So while I appreciate Tom looking at a building and running through, you know, multifamily, the facade design standards, what we have found is when you do the whole thing on a site from scratch, it's very challenging. And so I guess those designers are the hardest people to get in a room, much like the engineers and others, right? Because they don't have a ton of time to do free work, right? And so it's, it's hard to do that. So I think the feedback that, that I wish I had is, okay, can I go back to my designers and say, okay, if this is how it changed with these two buildings, what would the impact be? Right? But, but there's a cost to that. And I think when we say testing, that's what we mean. So I just do want to say that when we say development community, I think you had feedback from design professionals, at least some in those meetings, at least I hope so. It's not just the developer crying about money in his or her wallet.
Through the Chair, Mr. Robinson, I would definitely include designers as members of the development community when I use that term.
Who are frankly the most knowledgeable about the code because they have to put an entire project together. Nobody else has done that other than potentially three different buildings yet, and I think we just ought to keep that in mind. There's not been exhaustive testing when it comes to building a project from scratch.
Does any other commissioner have any questions for staff? Public. The procedure by which the public may speak to the commission at its meeting is, after the staff presentation is completed on public hearing items, the Chair will ask for public testimony on the issue. Persons who wish to testify will follow the time limits established in the commission's rule of procedures. Petitioners, including all of his and her representatives, get 10 minutes. Part of this time may be reserved for rebuttal. Representative of groups, community councils, PTAs, et cetera, get five minutes. Individuals get three minutes. When your testimony is complete, you may be asked questions by the commission. You may only testify once on any issue unless questioned by the commission. An individual may have appeal rights relating to any action Planning and Zoning Commission takes, except commission's recommendations to the Assembly, which are not appealable. Appeals must be filed with the Clerk's Office within 20 days after approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission of the resolution, which is the commission's final decision. A fee for the appeal is required at the time of filing. When you come up to the mic, please state your name and state your organization and spell your name if it's not a common spelling. I now open the public hearing on case 2015-0049. If you wish to speak, now is your opportunity. We drew a lottery.
Well, I guess I'll be the guinea pig. I'm William Marsh, MARSH, and I don't know whether I'm representing my organization or not, so we'll pretend like I'm just representing me.
Okay, that gives you three minutes.
I have to say, to start with, I think the process is desperately flawed on this rewrite. It is virtually impossible in three minutes to comment on any of the proposed changes. I could have a five-minute debate with you just about the required storage in multifamilies. It is too big an omnibus to have public testimony when you put so much into one. Part two, this Rabbit Creek Community Council could have been written by our meeting at our community council when this was handed out. What we were handed at our community council was this document with the highlights. No backstory, no idea of what was, what perpetrated this, what the effect will be, no idea how to even interpret it. So we are way behind the curve in what generates this. As I read through it, it's obviously all about cost cutting for the construction, and that's, everybody wants cost-effective housing in Anchorage, but the process has left us out in the weeds. As far as we know, this is the first we'd ever seen of it. The memorandum that's here wasn't attached. If it was supposed to be, it wasn't there. There's been absolutely no time to vet this and what it means to our communities with large tracts of land. And I think it is so complicated, it's virtually impossible for us to have any input as an individual or as a community council. It's just too many pages, too many items. Some of them might be important. The idea of removing personal storage, as we brought up and talked about for a number of minutes, that means that the personal area allocated to every homeowner in that multifamily is where their bicycle and their tires will be. It is no longer personal use area, and we can drive through any condominium project in town and look at the snow tires, bicycles, and firewood stacked on their balconies. There might be a reason why it's there, but we can't go through every issue. There simply isn't enough time. And the way this was presented, there's no way to come up with a comprehensive Reader's Digest version of our responses for those of us that participate. Anybody have a question?
Yeah, Mr. Robinson?
Thank you for your testimony, and I think I'd first start out by saying that, that you're absolutely right. There's a lot here, and it's a very complicated document. I guess on, on your, on your storage, because that's become my albatross. I think, I can recall my first apartment in Portland, the place where everybody has bicycles, and I had three of them inside a one-bedroom apartment. The question is, we all make choices within our, within our places where we can live or afford to live, right? Do you believe that it's a right to have, for everybody to have a garage, or a right for everybody to have a storage? Or do you think that there are trade-offs that need to be made in order to provide different products for different people in the marketplace?
My background is in light construction. We've never built a new building since I've been working for the company I worked for, but we do a lot of minor repairs and major repairs in condominium projects. What happens is the individuals, and I have been into hundreds and hundreds of them, if they don't have personal storage, what ends up in the, in the fire alleyways are bicycles and snow tires and Christmas ornaments. What blocks the common areas are bicycles, snowshoes, et cetera, et cetera. There is a reason, I think, that Planning and Zoning pointed that out, and I see the real world. I see fire escapes with seven bicycles in old buildings. This is what we see in the real world. This is not, we want to get this, we're constructing personal space at $200 a square foot. And I know of a couple of places here in town where they are currently constructing storage space for $200 a square foot, simply because there's no other way to get it. So it, just that one issue I see is, is being worthy of debate because once the building's built, once the homeowners have moved in, that homeowner's association then has to find their homeowners for how they live if they don't comply to the regulations. And I know one project right now with 138 units in it, and I will guarantee you, there is a bicycle in at least 30% of the hallways that is designated as the fire corridor. So I see that as a different issue than probably the developers or the builders would see it.
I don't think you do, because we also manage over 1,000 units, and I see them as well. But I think my point is, it is worthy of debate. The question is, think of each of these issues as requirements, absolute requirements of your zoning code versus creating incentives or having people decide what they think their end-users will be able to, what they want and what they're willing to pay for what they want, because it has to work.
I don't disagree, but I think every issue carries that weight, and I might side with A because I see what the reality is of how it's used in the field, and I see how other residents, particularly of condominiums, then pay for bad design, and they pay, and they pay, and they pay. And it never goes away while the developer moves on. The homeowners and the homeowner associations are left with bad designs or things that could have been done better.
Or a need to find another place to live.
Exactly, but the association will always have to fight the issue with any structure they're left.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions, Mr. Marsh? Thank you for your testimony. And I apologize for the confusion on the time start. We can do better. Thank you very much. Anyone else?
My name is Brian Harten, H-A-R-T-E-N, and I'm sort of here representing myself and not necessarily my employer, but I work for Dave Holquist, White Raven Development. And we've been having some issues with not only the old code, but the new code in interpretation of standards, distances, setbacks, and the like, and more and more, we're left to the whims of the folks down at Building Safety and their feelings about a code, their interpretation of a code, or their opinion. And I think anytime we throw the floodgates open to this level of accuracy and dissemination of a design standard, it's going to just grind things to a halt from our, from our standpoint. So, so that aside, I just picked one, one item out of, out of the list of changes here, and this 26-page memo I had, I didn't have a whole lot of time. I'm one of these engineers who doesn't have a lot of time to do this in my off time and compare it to the new Title 21. But if we look at change six, building and site orientation menu, down near the bottom of the page, so that's page 15 of 26. Menu choice H converts width limitations for front-facing garages from a townhouse requirement to a menu choice for townhouse structures. And when you break into that, what it does is if you have a, an overhead garage door on the same level as your main entry door, it limits that door to a single-car garage door instead of a dual car. And what that does, if we're talking about storage and access and places to put things, drastically eliminates usability of that garage space and runs counter to what, what I think was being, trying to make out here. So the devil's in the details, always in the details, and this is getting quite onerous. And back to what Mr. Robinson was saying about people's choice on where they get to live. They can pick a place that meets their needs, and some people may have a need for storage, some may not, but let's let the free market decide. And, you know, for instance, I have a, I have a condo outside, and we've got shared storage areas. Some people need it, some people don't. You can sign up for it and alternate. So there's ways around that, but that condo association made that work, and everybody seems to be largely happy with it. So I think it's, for lack of a better word, this is a massive overreach, and I think simpler is a little bit better. Does anybody have any questions?
Ms. Dean, then Ms. McConnell?
Through the Chair. Could you, you were talking about the garage door with the front door.
Yeah.
I know you're referring to sheer panels and the locations that you have to have sheer walls for earthquake. Can you expand on that so people understand a little bit more about what you're talking about and load paths and those kinds of things that are going to affect how you lay out a building? And now that you've asked for all these changes to, you know, they've asked for all these changes to the exterior and the look of the building and how that will affect the engineering of a townhouse or a multifamily?
Right, and I can't speak to whether it's required for sheer or what it was. This was pointed out to me by, by one of our consultants, and I'll just read the section that he referred to. Limited front-facing garage width for townhouses. Where garages for individual townhouse-style dwelling units face the street or are on the same building elevation as the primary front entry to the dwellings, limit the garage door width to no more than 50% of the width of each dwelling, or up to 67% provided the building facade achieves one or more features. Dot, dot, dot.
I think he's referring to the percentage of the front of the building and how much can be wall.
Right, well, currently, under the present code, we're allowed to have, say, a 20 or 22-foot-wide unit that has a front door and a two-car garage.
How do you have that and the sheer panels on either side of the garage door?
Correct, and whether or not it's an engineering issue, I don't know, or an aesthetics issue. I was thinking it was more from the aesthetic side.
In any event, we're having a conversation that all of a sudden we didn't used to have to have.
Correct.
And now we have to spend how many hours figuring this out? Now, you guys are for-profit, not a nonprofit. You're not getting any money from the government for design, for acquisition of property. You're not getting reimbursed for selling your units to low-income people. You're having to sell at a particular profit margin-
Correct.
-in order to stay in business. How many units did you guys build in Alaska last year?
In Alaska, approximately 75 units.
And how many did you build in other states last year?
I don't have those numbers, but we did build in the Seattle/Washington area, maybe 20, 25.
I know you guys have done business down in Seattle for quite a few years.
Yeah, that's where Dave got his start.
Okay, and so at 75 units, somewhere in Girdwood, somewhere in Anchorage, somewhere in Eagle River, correct?
Most, almost all were in Anchorage last year.
Okay, but in previous years, you've run all areas?
Correct.
Okay, so now that we have the new Title 21 design standards, what is your position with, with Dave Holquist?
I'm, I'm on his land development side. I'm on his land development side. I head his White Raven Development. So I'm a, just my background, I'm a civil engineer turned contractor turned developer.
And you did the, I'll call it the gravel pit, but West Park?
West Park, right. We just recorded the last phase that we have in West Park just a few days ago.
Were you on West Park from start to finish?
I was not, but I did go in as a contractor and excavate for other contractors in there as it went along.
Okay, and then went to work for Dave afterwards?
Correct.
Okay, great. So you have a lot of experience on for.
I've been in construction basically since I was 12 years old.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. McConnell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a comment and then a question. I just wanted to note that the section about townhouse garage width doors that was referenced, in the current provision, that's a requirement on all townhouses. The change in this ordinance makes that a menu choice. So it is now a choice that you get credit for. It is not a requirement. So I wanted to clarify that, and I understand that it's confusing, but.
Very confusing, and it was my understanding, my consultant's understanding, that it eliminated. And so I was going off of him, as I said, I didn't have time to go through. And then as a side note, we were looking at a four-lot subdivision last year and trying to disseminate whether we had the option to go old code, new code, Title 21. And as I was making that evaluation, I was running through the new Title 21, and I got to the part of Onsite Well and Septic Systems, which is kind of my forte, and the document continually referred me to a user's manual on that section. And when I asked staff at Onsite at the Building Safety Department about this user manual so that I could evaluate this, they said it didn't exist. And that added to some frustration and a little bit of leiriness about moving over to new code.
Yes, I understand.
If we have user manuals that are referenced that don't exist.
So if I could ask my question. I'm not sure where in the Seattle area you have developed, but do they have design standards in that community?
I don't work down in the Seattle area, so I can't speak to that. But I will say that the general manager down there has said that the design standards and the ability to get permits and stuff through is, just doesn't seem as arduous as it is up here.
Thank you.
No further questions? Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
You want to testify, sir? Okay. Mr. Coffey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I haven't been here for a while, nice to see you all. And I haven't been able to study this rather lengthy document. I got the memo in off the website a few days ago and started to read that and figured I better get my hands on the code. And of course, now they've attached it here, so I'll spend some more time studying this. I wanted to talk about some of the stuff in the higher-density districts, because I believe that that's what we need the most of, which is hire a lot of affordable housing for people who are working for a living and who don't make a lot of money and can't pay $1,200, $1,400, $1,800 a month for housing in this town. And it's very, very costly to do that. And as everybody knows, we haven't moved, made a lot of these new things. So when I read about a reduction in the floor area ratio from, or excuse me, an increase from 1 to 1.5, I'm reminded that a very short time ago, it was 2. And when I asked that they shouldn't cut it in half, I was told in a committee that, well, we don't want to double the floor area ratio, which sort of made me spin my head a little bit. The bulking things, the open space requirements, everything along here that I've read so far indicates that they're on the margins, trying to reduce those things that add cost and significant cost to the construction of higher-density housing. I agree with Erica that there's not much we can do about building costs, there's not much we can do about labor costs. There's things we can do about land, but that'll take some time. Hopefully, the new mayor will address that. And so all I urge here is that, to the degree that you take those things out of there, and there's an accumulation of them, you know, there's private open space, there's other open space, there's landscaping, there's setbacks, there's all of these requirements that diminish the use of the land or add costs and incremental amounts to the cost of construction and development. And there's so many of them that it is hard to make a determination about any one of them having what the consequences of that are. I agree with Tyler that you've got to design a building before you know, and then even then, you're within margins of error. So I believe that many of these standards that are in here are contrary to the, creating an opportunity to build housing that is affordable in Anchorage. And I believe further that if we don't do it, it's just going to result in a lot more influx out of town. There's about 30,000 people on the Glen every morning, you know, in, and then every evening out. And that's not, that's not good for our economics. It's great for the growth of the valley, but not so good for Anchorage. So to the degree that you can enhance the things that they're proposing, or perhaps continue them, or maybe even do what I understand the new ordinance does, which continues the, just basically suspends these for a couple of years entirely and see what the consequences of that are, I think we might be far better served that way, perhaps, maybe not through 2017, but maybe for two building seasons, so you see what happens. And there you go. And so, you know, I could stand up here and talk about stuff for a long hour, but if anybody has any questions, I'll be happy to answer it. And frankly, my last comment is this, I'm back, and I'm going to be working on this just like I did for 10 years before I decided to be somewhat crazy and run for mayor. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Coffey, do we have any questions for him? Before we go to Mr. Robinson, I've been asked to have you state your name for the record, please, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry, Dan Coffey.
Thank you very much. Mr. Robinson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, I, first of all, apologize to my former colleagues over here for getting into a little bit of a debate prematurely, but you and I and others here have had multiple bites at this apple. I used to sit over there on staff, you were on assembly, you're now commenting as a citizen, I believe.
Yes.
We've been at it, collectively or not, for a number of years. And I've heard it said in the community, well, you know, it took us nine years, so we might as well just give it a shot as it is. Your comment to that, I mean, did we end up with, we ended up with because we did our absolute best, and we ought to just let it ride, or, and let it go? Or what do we do?
Well, if you look at the consequences of the last, what, five and 17 months, you don't see a lot of construction being done under the new code when the old code is still in effect. So they extended the old code for one more year. I'm aware from all the folks that I know in the development and construction business and the residential construction, that they're very unhappy with not only the code, but also the processes out at the permit center, which are, I talked to a guy who was trying to put up a sign. He's been five months trying to get a permit to put a sign up. I saw him on my way in there today. And so there's a multitude of things outside of the code that need some fixing. But I believe that the code is so convoluted and detailed that it's very, very difficult to get your way through it, which is what leads to a lot of the problems. And then you have one opinion, I don't mean you, I mean people have one, and then the staff has another, and then that delays things some more, and time is money, and so on and so forth. And so simplicity is better, in my judgment, and the things that they've done here, like the change in the floor area ratio, like combining townhouses and condos, and a lot of those other things, they're certainly beneficial, I believe. But I just am fearful that they really don't go far enough, although on the other hand, I suggested we might try to suspend the design criteria for another year, a year and a half, two building seasons. Maybe what we should do is adopt this with the understanding we're going to give it two building seasons, and then we'll see what we've accomplished, while also working on the other tasks, land and processes and so on.
Great, thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you for your testimony, Mr. Coffey.
Thank you, nice to see you all. Are you guys going to continue on tonight, or you?
Well, I think we'll continue on for a while. That hasn't been decided. It probably will be decided here shortly.
All right, thank you, sir.
Anyone else wish to testify? Anyone else at all? Seeing and hearing none, I now close the public hearing on case 2015-0049. On that. Mr. Walker?
I move to adjourn to the Committee of the Whole.
I believe that I'm going to be jabbed here in a minute. We have to have a motion on the floor before we can move. So if you withdraw your motion, and then if you want to make a motion to adopt this or something like that, then you could do that, and then we could go to Committee of the Whole. Mr. Walker?
In the case of 2015-0049, I move to approve the request.
Thank you very much.
I will.
I have a second from Mr. Spring, your wingman over there. Okay. Now, if, Ms. Barker?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm struck by the impression that, and I'm coming to this actually new, unlike Mr. Robinson, having had the pleasure of serving on multiple sides of this dais. I'm struck by the notion that the new code is mortally hampered by the lack of the user guide and design guidance, things that would help the public actually implement this. You know, I can look at as a professional planner, and I can see what some of those choices are, but I actually can't even critically evaluate them in terms of any particular deal for lack of those tools which have not been provided to the public. It's like we're giving the public a salad bar instead of a menu, and there's no guide to the caloric count within by which one can make wise choices. I feel if we were to send any message at all to the Assembly, it's that we need to get on with the tools that would allow the public to effectively use some of the good stuff that is within this code, instead of going about trying to piecemeal, edit it, redact it, and somehow make it workable, when we don't even really know what the critter is. It's too convoluted and too complex for the average developer, and that means demean developers by any stretch of the imagination there. But for them to wander their way through a variety of menus of options, when folks are used to doing business by kind of a, you know, yes, it's good, no, it's not, that's the rule, that's what it is. The problem we really have to grapple with in this is that if we don't have something which allows us to build higher-quality housing of longer-lasting value, we are going to revisit the mistakes of the pipeline era of the housing that was built that right now has prematurely reached the end of its useful economic life. That, my friends, is something we cannot afford to perpetuate in this city. We need to have responsible redevelopment, and we need to develop, again, housing of value that's going to continue on into the future as an investment, that's worthy of the community and worthy of its future occupants.
Thank you, Ms. Barker. Mr. Robinson?
I'd like to move that we go to the Committee of the Whole.
Thank you, we have a second on that. Seeing and hearing no objection, we are now in the Committee of the Whole. Mr. Spring?
Well, first of all, I'll admit that I am also having trouble wrapping my head around this one, and it's complex and difficult, and would have helped quite a bit, as in most cases where you get some public testimony, a lot of public testimony in this case, so you can sort through the issues. I mean, there's a lot of issues here, and I bet there's a lot of differences of opinion about whether they're good recommendations or not. And I just can't make a decision. I could not vote on this thing today with the little information I have and the little public input I have, because I suspect there's a lot more out there.
Okay. Any other commissioners? Mr. Walker?
I feel the same way, but I'd like to ask Tyler if you could maybe answer a question. I know that you played a role in the group that shaped this on some level, and yet, obviously, you and Erica have had a spirited dialogue tonight about some of these issues. I guess I'd like to hear more from you on your feeling on this and the complexity of it, and is this, in general, is this reducing the burden on developers, or is it increasing? I mean, it feels to me like it's increasing the burden on developers, so.
You want me to answer that?
Go ahead. We're in a Committee of the Whole. And with this large audience, I'm going to be very formal.
You know, I, you know, like a lot of people, I look around Anchorage and think, okay, it's not the prettiest city. There are problems with the way that it functions as a winter city, as a higher-density city, as a city that can't figure out where its high-density areas are and where they're not. I mean, I think that's a big part of it, you know? We basically went and rezoned whole swaths of the single-family neighborhoods to R3, and then, you know, and R4, and then wondered why we had this mismatch of zoning district to lot pattern? And how you, and to me, fundamentally, how you kind of get through that is the challenge. So we're left with all these tiny little lots that say you can put six or eight units or four units on them, and, you know, as you read through all this, you probably can't get more than two on them. And, I mean, so I think, I think the frustration, you know, is very clearly identified in the comp plan. Mitzi said it just well. I mean, it's not many places you get 40-year-old buildings that are already obsolete. That said, my experience the last five years has been to try to figure out how to do redevelopment and development in Anchorage in our existing lot patterns with the old code and with the new code. And the new code has made that vastly more challenging. Some of it is because we're still getting to know it, and we have to work through interpretations. I believe when Mr. Coffey was on the Assembly, I mean, I think I remember him saying many times, hey, just because we're going to adopt this doesn't mean we're going to come back with lots and lots of amendments to the code, because we're going to identify things that were unintended consequences. But I think you just have this incredible frustration on both sides. You have the community saying, we want a better Anchorage, and you have developers saying, this is making what was already a pretty frustrating endeavor even harder. And so, you know, I think staff, you know, has listened and tried to make changes with the existing framework as the starting point. And I know I've had debates, does it make sense to just throw the whole thing out and start over? And, you know, we know where that, how that would go. And so they've done what I think, you know, is the responsible thing. They've started with what we agreed upon at the end of the day. And the question is now, do you just continue to tweak it and see where you get, or do you actually listen to people that say? You know, I have, my boss comes to me and says, there's nothing else left for me to do but pick colors, because there's such prescriptive parts of the code that I can't do innovative, exciting architecture. I can't try new building styles. I'm basically told where to put garages, where to put entries, where to put articulations, how, I'm told everything to do by this code. And so I think it stifles some of our creativity. I think, you know, as Stacy said, I'm not sure that in the end of the day, you could follow all of this and still provide bad development, too. So where we go from here, I don't know. But I think we all probably share in this frustration, whether you're in a community council that sees redevelopment happening in your neighborhood, or you're on staff, or you're sitting here where we're sitting. And I think we can either march through section by section and say, yay, I think you're going in the right direction, or you're not, but I think you're still going to get, if we get through all of that, I think you're still going to get to the point after we do this that says, what is it in its totality? And I can tell you from, we have some bids due back on a project tomorrow, and I am bracing myself. And yeah, not all of it has to do with zoning code, as was pointed out. Some of it has to do with costs of construction, a funder that requires to design a six-star, you know, some other stuff, right? But I can tell you, we made lots of decisions in our designs that we would not have made otherwise, and we don't want, we don't think we have necessarily a better product for following the code. Now, the flip side is, are there some bad developments out there that this would prevent? If I, if you all agree that some of the stuff we do is good, and I know Mitzi has weighed in that she actually doesn't like a lot of our stuff, so we know, we know, the beauty's in the eye of the beholder, right? And so, but I don't know. This, I just, I know we're in a tough spot as a community, as a commission, as the Assembly, as community councils, and as staff.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Mr. Spoories, Mr. Dean, Ms. Dean, Mr. Spoories, Ms. Dean, any comments?
You know, it just kind of echoes the frustration that everyone seems to have with this, and I understand that it's a very detail-orienteded code, but I do have a tough time in the rub, and when I read this and review it, as it's been here presented with us, or even as it was being drafted, is why the complexity? as it was being drafted, is why the complexity of it? I don't understand why the code has to be so complex that, you know, somebody reading a set of plans can't figure this out, or a developer, and that's where, you know, I think we just need to make it a little more, in layman's terms, so it's easier to follow and comprehend at a glance.
Thank you. Ms. Dean, and Ms. McConnell?
I'm a remodeling contractor, and I've worked on housing, the oldest housing that I worked on was 1921. And when we first came to Anchorage, when people first started building here, the barge came when the barge came, and the building materials that were on it were all you had. So, you made it work, and you cut and pasted, and you made it work, and it was almost all owner-builder. And even 15 years ago, half of the building permits were still being pulled by owner-builders. They weren't being pulled by builders. And today, a tremendous amount of people are still owner-builders. I work on all different kinds of housing in Anchorage, and Anchorage is all about freedom of choice and always has been. Now, we're looking at a whole set of rules for what people can and can't do. Now, a lot of people are under the impression under the new Title 21, it's going to fix Anchorage. Well, they're complaining about things that have happened in the past. Since Anchorage is virtually built out with housing, there isn't that much left. We're going to control and make increase costs dramatically for just a very small portion of housing. The actual beautifying of Anchorage isn't going to happen. The only way it could possibly happen is if you go ahead and make this code now also apply to remodels, which with a stroke of a pen, they could do. And so, here we would be with a dramatic increase of all housing costs. But going back to the beginning, I mean, Anchorage was the place where you came, you were in the military, you ended up here, you're 20 years old, and you bought a little lot in Spinard, or in Fairview, or in Mountain View, or whatever, and you built a house yourself. You got your buddies together, and you got your VA loan, and you built your house. And maybe after three years of living in Anchorage, you got trans, you know, transferred just another part of the state or out of state, and so, you sold your house to another GI, and they paid the VA loan down, and they put an addition or two on it, and they did it themselves, and they made it work, and they used the materials that they had. And, you know, I just, I look at Anchorage as that kind of place. I don't look at it as, to me, I see these as almost cookie cutouts. It takes all of the personality out of Anchorage. One of the things I liked about living here when I moved here was that you didn't see one developer come in and develop mile after mile of five different styles. I grew up in a suburb of Chicago that went for miles and miles, and there were only five different styles of floor plan. That was it. You had five choices. We had the first house that wasn't white in the neighborhood, it was green. People drove for miles around to look at our house. I swear to God. I don't want to live in a place like this. This is not fun.
My turn. I do not live in a greenhouse. I've worked on Title 21 as long as anybody. I'm sorry, Ms. McConnell, I'm sorry. Ms. McConnell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do want to say thank you to all of you for your comments, and particularly, Mr. Robinson. We have had many interesting discussions on these issues. And speaking to what Ms. Dean just said, you know, I think when you have people building their own homes, pulling their own permits, designing their own homes, you do end up with a lot of variety and creativity, and it's wonderful, but I can also point to developments in this town, and I don't think we have anyone, any developers large enough to build miles and miles and miles, but I can point to neighborhoods where every single structure looks exactly the same. You don't even get the five choices. It's exactly the same, and when I was looking to buy a house, I couldn't go to those neighborhoods because I didn't think I'd be able to find my house if I bought one of those. So, what the answer is, you know, does any, there clearly is no right answer, because we're having these debates and discussions. We start, you know, lots and lots of communities around the country have design standards. Some of them move in the direction of having a design review process, and we, you know, with a board or commission, and we tossed that around, creating a new architectural review board or something like that, and that got tossed out very early in the process for a couple of reasons. One, we have a very short building season, and so, it felt like that would be a process that was too long, and secondly, we're still, you know, at 300,000, we're still a relatively small community, and so, there was the concern that, you know, my colleague slash competitor would be making judgment calls on my projects, and that wasn't fair. So, we tossed out that, which is something that is done in other communities. We started with standards that were prescriptive, you know, this was how you would do it, and it wasn't super complicated, but people didn't like it because they did say it stifled creativity. And we moved to a menu, to these menu choices, so that you would have options, and there were certain goals that we were trying to achieve, and these goals are spoken about in our comprehensive plans and our adopted municipal policies. The community's spoken up and said, these are some goals that we want to address through design standards, and we tried to provide those, but we tried to provide them in a flexible way, so that there were menu choices, and you had to address this goal, but there were different ways you could address it. And with that comes the complexity, the fact that it's long, and there's all these little options, and it does get complex. So, again, there's no right answer. Every direction has a trade-off. This is the path that we have gone down, but this is the path that we're, I mean, having design standards is a path we are directed to go down, and there was certainly desire to have more choices. So, I don't know when the last time Mr. Robinson's boss walked in and said, all she gets to pick is the color choices, but I'm not sure that's exactly accurate right now, because there are different ways in which you can put together the various choices in the menus to achieve the goal. And one of the statements that Mr. Davis put in his, one of his testing things, was that he found that this, these menu choices did not select a certain style of development, a modern style, or a Victorian style, or a craftsman style, or something, that, you know, different styles of development could achieve these standards within their own style, so. But again, I do want to say thank you for the discussion over this.
I'm going to take a minute, then I'll go to Mr. Spohies. I've worked on Title 21 as long as anyone in here. None of these arguments are new to me. And my concern is, we had a new Title 21, we adopted it, and I look forward to seeing the projects come forward. They haven't come forward, and I'm concerned that what I'm hearing, take it with a grain of salt, is that they can't afford, the projects don't pencil out if they follow the new Title 21. Well, we need housing, multifamily housing, to be viable as an industry, so that our people have a place to live, and people can move and advance, and the residential community has got a place. So, I see it as we need to take the steps to bring the new Title 21 to a point where it's economical, and we have people developing it on it. I also agree with everybody, the common thread tonight is it's confusing. And I guess I'll make one point. I absolutely will not throw out the new Title 21, okay? I've tried that step already, and I don't want to do it again, but I do think that we've got to make changes, we've got to make tweaks to get it going forward. It seems to me that based upon what we have before us, and based upon that we've got companion action coming right behind it that throws out all the design standards for a period of time, that what we should do is we should remove Section 7, the design standards, from what we're considering now. Just say, okay, we'll deal with those with the next section. If we stop them all, it's handled, anything we take, chances are, will be picked up within two weeks or three weeks, so let's take Section 7 out of this packet, and then work our way through the remaining sections, which removes a lot of the complexity. And I'm trying to get to where this body is comfortable proceeding, and the audience can understand what we're doing. And so, I would like to, we've got another companion legislation coming behind this that's going to set those aside for 18 months, is what I believe it is. Ms. McConnell, is that right?
Mr. Chair, it's a proposal, which has not been adopted, but yes, it does propose to suspend them till January 1st, 2017.
Okay. And so, I don't think it serves this body well to deal with them now when we have this other one coming, so let's just set those aside and do the best job we can on the remaining sections, and we can maybe get through this thing. And my goal, and if this is, you know, my goal is to try to get the projects down where they make economic sense, so the people can build them, so the community can move into them. That's the goal, because right now, what we're told is we don't, they don't pencil out, and that's my thought. You look pained, Ms. McConnell.
Well, Mr. Chair, nobody's building these under the old code either, so it's clearly not these standards that are holding people back from building multifamily housing.
It's a, it's a, I agree it's not any one, but I can control these, I can make changes here. The state, I can't. The federal, I can't. FEMA, I can't. There's a bunch of these, this is it, what I have. Mr. Robinson, then Mr. Spohies.
No, I just wanted to add, I mean, we just had testimony of someone that built 75 units this year in Anchorage. I believe these pertain to townhouse and multifamily housing.
Were those 75 townhouses? I don't know what they, I don't know what they were.
The point is, is there is stuff being built under the new code, or under the old code.
I have not seen multifamily projects being built under the old code, with the exception of Mr. Debenham's, who stated that he was able to save 20% by acting as his own general contractor.
Right, but my point is, these are multifamily, these are design standards that deal with both townhouse and multifamily, and we had testimony that there were 75 units built this year. These affect those 75 units potentially.
I do not know whether those 75 units were single-family homes, duplexes, or townhouses. I don't know.
Thank you.
Mr. Spohies, you've been patient.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As part of your testimony, I would support removing Section 7, but that's not why I requested to speak. My question's for the staff, and as Commissioner Barker pointed out, that she said that there's some tools that need to be addressed or made available to the public, and I was wondering if we could expand on what those tools are and how it would help, you know, minimize the cost or help developers pencil.
Through the chair, Mr. Spohies. I hesitate to speak for Ms. Barker, but my understanding was that she was speaking about the user's guide, which I think is an explanatory tool, and thus, would have no impact on cost, but just would help translate the standards into maybe more of a layman's language or a discussion, where there's more opportunity to flesh out what the standard says and what the purpose is, and isn't in code language.
Basically, just kind of an instruction manual on how to use the new code, but it doesn't, doesn't change anything, correct?
That's the user's guide, yes.
All right, thanks.
Mr. Walker, then Mr. Spring.
I'm as confused now as I was when we started, but as we're talking about the feasibility of development, I mean, I think that's the big issue that keeps coming up here. I was flipping through these case studies or these tests, which I think are great, by the way, thank you, and thanks for taking such a beating tonight. And then, I started off earlier, you know, before we even gotten into the meeting with you, so, thank you for putting up with all this and for being patient with us. But if we're talking about feasibility, the very lowest form of the development in Anchorage is represented here, and I hope that this isn't a Holquist project, I can't tell where this is at, but it's called Brookshire, and this is literally the bottom of the barrel as far as, you know, residential townhome construction goes in Anchorage, and it qualifies under these standards. So, if we're worried about townhouses being feasible, I mean, I'm not saying I support this, I'm, like I say, I'm still confused, but, I mean, it doesn't get any lower than that. So, this one here.
Part of the issue, though, is the certainty that a developer has when he prepares a design, and probably, the big gorilla is, the developers don't have certainty that if they do this design, that it will pass. I mean, I've noticed, Mr. Davis, on a number of these, when something was almost there, he gave it full credit.
Mr. Chair, I really apologize for interrupting, but I don't think that's accurate. I think when he has said five out of four comply, or three out of five comply, he is only counting check marks, and he is not counting anything where he has said almost.
I disagree. Take the building and site orientation menu, take the first example, you've got or-almost and almost on that one, and working my way through these, I can't find another good example, but the almost we're counting on these when I work my way through them. Well, maybe I was wrong, the ones I see now. Okay, maybe it was or-almost. All right, I apologize, Mr. Davis, I was wrong on that. Okay, Mr. Spring.
Sorry, I'm looking up, looking up something. I just want to, oh, yeah, there it is. I like your suggestion, Mr. Chair, regarding the withdrawal of Section 7. I guess I would add, maybe we should consider withdrawing Section 4, Exhibit B, the open space requirements, because I think that'll be also, I don't know if that's subject to this new alternative ordinance or not, but it's pretty involved, and it has really significant impacts, I think, on development standards. If we're going to eliminate the ones that are really confusing and maybe more controversial, we should consider.
No, that's not my intent.
No.
I was, I was not, this group can handle controversial, confusing, complex, but seven, I just felt that any time we spent on seven, with it coming right down the pike at our next meeting, would be, would be a waste of our time, so I'm not interested in not addressing the complex issues.
Okay, that's fine. I was kind of asking, I guess, and kind of tangentially, if the new alternative ordinance had any changes to Exhibit B, Section 4.
Ms. McConnell?
Through the chair, Mr. Spring, yes. The other ordinance addresses things that are found in Section 1. It addresses things that are found in the open space, Section 4. So, there's actually more overlap than just Section 7, and I'm a little concerned that if you postpone Section 7, I mean, Mr. Chair, is your suggestion that you will talk about Section 7 at the same time you discuss the new ordinance, or is, or are you kind of stating your support for the new ordinance in terms of waiving the standards for a year and a half?
I wasn't suggesting support of the ordinance at all, I was just saying that we would take it up at the same time, because they're so parallel to each other, is what I was trying, I wasn't predisposing we would act one way or the other way, no.
Well, I apologize, I probably could have been clearer, but as Mr. Spring has drawn out of me, there actually is more overlap than just Section 7.
All right, we're in the Committee of the Whole. I will point out that our next meeting... I will point out that our next meeting, we have only one other case. But we probably should come out of the Committee of the Whole and take up this issue, or do something. Mr. Robinson?
Just a suggestion, if we do intend to go through it, I would suggest that we go through the ordinance by section in the Committee of the Whole, to see if there are going to be specific issues, and identify where those issues might be, so that when we come back out, we can actually just approve, you know, sections of the ordinance at a time, and then deal with amendments to specific ones. Or you can get, on the main motion, people can just start lobbing whatever, whatever motion they want back and forth. I mean, that's the, that's the option, right?
Yeah. Do we stay in the Committee of the Whole?
I mean, I think that makes sense, because we tend to overlap quite a bit on our amendments, so.
Do we want to do it all tonight, or do we want to take some time to read through this separately and come back and stay in the Committee of the Whole in the meantime, so we can discuss things? Or do we have to get out of the Committee of the Whole before?
Well, I would say we come out of the Committee of the Whole and then take a motion to continue it toward next meeting, if that's what they wanted, or...
It would give us some time to review our thoughts, put things together, instead of trying to do all tonight. I'm not trying to, you know, push things off, but, you know, we had a lot of things to talk about tonight, and food for thought.
We've got, it brought up, elicited a number of hits. Ms. Barker, then Ms. McConnell?
I'm just wondering if continuing till just the next meeting really addresses the flawed public process here?
I'm not willing to say that the public process is flawed on it. I mean, this has been discussed, it's been around. We got it on short notice also, so, anyway, on that one. Ms. McConnell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We did try to be thorough in our staff report, but if it would help the commission to have a work session, we could do a work session before your next meeting on this.
Well, it seems to me we have a number of options here. Mr. Spring?
I agree, I could benefit from a work session. I mean, I read it pretty thoroughly, but I really have to go over it again, really, I think, section by section, and it would be good to discuss it with the staff, you know, freely in a work session, so I can get a better feel for what the intent of some of these changes are, and what the effect is. It would help me, anyway.
Mr. Walker?
I move to adjourn from the Committee of the Whole, and I intend to withdraw my motion to approve the request in case number 2015-0049.
Well, we're going to take it one step at a time. I heard, come out of the Committee of the Whole. Do I have a second? I have a second by Mr. Spring. We're voting on coming out of the Committee of the Whole. We're out of the Committee of the Whole. Mr. Walker, you wanted to, now you can withdraw your motion.
Do I need to make a motion to withdraw my motion?
I just think you withdraw.
Okay, I, I'm withdrawing my motion.
Okay. What's the wish of the body in case 2015-0049? June 1st? Yeah, first meeting in June. Mr. Spring?
I move to postpone the case to the first meeting in June, and set up a work session with staff in the interim.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Do we have any discussion? All, please use your machine. Okay, we'll take it up. Ms. McConnell, will you send out Survey Monkey or something on the work session? Before we adjourn tonight, I remind everybody that we have been invited by the Chief Financial Officer, that's not quite the title, to have two candidates to work on the physical working group on that. I've got one member that's interested. If you're interested in doing that, would you please send me an email on that? If we have no other, I will accept a motion to adjourn. We've got a motion, we second it, we are adjourned.